More than you know, one I let it slide. So with that, I guess I'll call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 at 8:00 AM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thank you. Um. All right, moving on to first select woman's updates. Um, just want to highlight again that Tuesday, next Tuesday is the annual budget referendum. Um, so polls will be opening at six o'clock in the morning and they close at eight o'clock at night. Uh, District One votes at, uh, the Paulson Elementary or Middle School, I should say, on Green Hill Road. District Two is at Brown School. Um, and just encourage everybody to get out and vote. Uh, absentee ballots are still available in the town clerk's office, so you can make arrangements there if you can't be here on, um, referendum day. But just want to make sure that everybody also, there's a lot of resources on the town website explaining the budget. Um, there's a button down. If you scroll down towards the bottom of the website page on the front, you'll see a whole square that says budget referendum. You click on that. It takes you to information about the budget, um, as well as answers some of the questions that the board received. Uh, the board finance received at the public hearing. Um, and then, um, there's also a few, I'm not quite sure. I think you have to put in the search bar tax calculator. You can, uh, get to a spot on the website that allows you to calculate what your taxes might be, um, based on the proposed mill rate that the Board of Finance is considering. They did not set the mill rate until after the referendum, but they have talked about it at the public hearing or a mill rate reduction of around 26, 27%. Um, and, um, you can see what impact that might have based on the recent revaluation on your annual property taxes. So just wanted to make sure, pass that on. Um, also want to just highlight, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen at the beginning, uh, or actually at the end of every year votes on its meeting schedule. Um, our meeting schedule is set up with two meetings a month. One meeting is at 8:00 AM on Tuesday mornings. It's Zoom only. That provides a lot of convenience for, uh, board members who do some, who do have full-time jobs, um, and also for staff. And then we have an evening meeting, which is more, uh, convenient for the public. Um, and so, and that's usually on a Monday night, uh, later in the month that is at seven o'clock and is hybrid. So people can attend remote or in person. Um, and all meetings are recorded and you can get those online. Um, and all meeting agendas are posted by the Friday before, uh, our, our regular meetings. And then in addition to that, sometimes the board holds special meetings. Those are required to be posted 24 hours in advance as a special meeting. Um, and, um, those are not sometimes on the calendar because sometimes they get pulled together very quickly. But for example, this Tuesday morning meeting is a regular meeting that we've been holding. This is, I think, our fourth year of doing it 8:00 AM Zoom. All Zoom Board of Selectmen meetings. So just want to highlight that. Um, so if you check.
Before that, it was 8:30, I think.
Pardon?
Before that, it was 8:30. So I think we moved it from 8:30 to eight.
Yeah, to even make it more convenient for people who do work, you know, being able to pop in. And that's the other thing is we do have on our agendas always, which is kind of unusual because I've talked to a lot of other towns. We have a section for citizens comments at the beginning of the meeting. This is for our regular meetings, not all meetings we do this, but our regular scheduled meetings. And we have a, a, a section for citizens comments at the end of the meeting. Um, and so those are always listed on the agenda. So just want to highlight that information. Um, and with that, I guess I open it up to any liaison reports or selectman comments.
The, uh, on, uh, May 8th, which is Wednesday night, tomorrow night, there's the annual awards dinner from six to eight at the Madison Senior Center for the Madison Youth and Family Services. So, um, award winners are typically folks that have, um, you know, from Daniel Hand High School have been contributing to, um, some of the programming that's been going on, um, over their high school career. And there's some wonderful awards, um, happening that night. So congrats in advance to the winners.
Okay. And, and our schedule was a little funky because in April, because of the school break and everything. So I know we just had a meeting last week. So that's why there hasn't really had an opportunity to think to have other meetings to update us on. But, um, there's no other, no other reports, um, since last week. Um, great. So we'll move on, um, to citizens comments. Um, and, uh, Jeannie, um, is.
There are no hands raised.
No? Okay, great. And I'll just highlight, um, that there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Um, although this is an unusual meeting because we have an executive session. Um, and so the citizens comments come before the executive session. The executive, executive session is where we kind of close out. So people who are attending this meeting, um, you will not be able to hear the board deliberations during that executive session. So there'll be just a blank screen, I think. Or, uh, and then, um, I forget how it works with the executive session, but anyway, um, um, but then we'll reconvene the meeting at the end. So, um, but citizens comments will be before that executive session. Moving on to, uh, then item number six, um, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
They're moved.
Okay. Uh, any questions, comments? No? From board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. All right. So, um, item number seven, um, and I, I know that, uh, I think Sam is here to speak to item number seven. Um, so I'd like to discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the building department in the amount of $18,000 to fund overtime costs pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved to work.
Okay.
Whatever you want to give me.
Okay, first and a second. Thank you. Um, and so is Sam here to talk about this? Okay, great. So we'll have Sam join us.
Morning, everybody.
Hey, Sam.
Hi, Sam.
Uh, so as you know, our building official had a, you know, significant medical event and, um, we had to get some coverage. So this was, this money basically been expended for, uh, to, to provide the inspections while Vinnie was incapacitated. And we were able to get, uh, my deputy, Tim, certified as a building official. He did about 700 inspections would save this probably about $20,000. Um, so, uh, this money is just to get us through to cover to, we've already expended it and to get to the end of the year. We, we're in a good place right now.
And, and this includes, we did use a building official, right, from another, uh, municipality for a period of time until Tim was able to step in. So it's kind of a combination of, um, those hours and then the hours with the, uh, other building official that had assisted us to keep things.
Yeah, we had two other, two or three other building officials that were, you know, stepping in to cover the schedule. So it was, it was, uh, quite interesting juggling everything for a little while, but, uh, we got it done.
Well, and the good thing is that the new budget, you know, we're trying to build in those redundancies in different departments. And, um, the new budget, you know, part of that was to make sure that we have more, uh, support in the building department. Um, um, so we don't anticipate having this issue next year. Okay, any further questions? No? All right, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, item number eight, um, is a discussion of the Green Hill Road, Monker Town Road sidewalk project as part of the townwide sidewalk feasibility study and CIP. So, um, I think, I'm not sure who's on for this. I think Bill McMinn is on. And, um, just to give a little background about this. This was, uh, this was discussed as a possible project when we were determining the Monker Town Road location for the elementary school. And we did put in CIP, um, a sidewalk feasibility study and that this was something we wanted to look further into. Obviously with the school budget and everything, this was not considered part of the school project. It was something independent of that, um, because it's broader than just the new school location. Um, and we found out recently that, um, we might be able to get this entire project funded through, uh, lots of funds, uh, from the state. Uh, there's a huge backlog of funding that needs to be used by our cog. Um, and, um, they came, uh, the folks from DOT actually came and presented to the cog earlier this year and talked about how sidewalk projects actually qualify for lots of, um, funding, which I think we were more of the view that that was just roadway projects. So, um, so we, you're, you know, we identified this along with a few other projects that we wanted to put in an application for lots of funding, but we needed design plans and lots of does not cover that. So, and we need the feasibility study. You know, this is a complicated project. So I think before we move further on this, we're having the feasibility study in process. I don't think they're completely done yet, but I'll let, uh, Bill speak to that. Um, but we want to, I want to make sure the board is comfortable with the project itself because we really haven't had CIP said it's, you know, go ahead, look at the project. Now we're looking at the project, but before we do some big grant applications for, for state funding, I want to talk it through and, and, and see, uh, get some feedback from the board on the project itself. So I'll turn it over to Bill and.
Thank you, Peggy. I'll be very brief. Uh, we have, uh, Kent Ganton, uh, from Stantec, uh, who'll do a little, who'll do the presentation. But I just, I think Peggy overcapped it really well. We've been looking at the sidewalk connection, you know, since we talked about the projects, uh, the two schools, you know, we definitely looked at trying to connect them through the wetlands that, you know, just didn't work out, the feasibility that's, you know, not really practical at this time. So Kent, uh, has doing, been doing the preliminary study. Uh, you know, he's, he's ready to pull the trigger on the application for the grant that will pay for, I understand, 100% of the construction. Um, you know, things that we definitely need to do once we, if we do obtain the grant and, uh, and we want to move forward is finalize the design that this is just a preliminary design, you know, meet with the neighbors. There's going to be impact to the neighborhood. And I believe there's some other greenway agencies that we want to talk to, um, you know, to see that we're connecting. I know that I talked to Kent on my own about, you know, the, where the sidewalk can go from here. So these are all preliminary conversations. Nothing, nothing's happening because we want to bring it to the Board of Selectmen for their review and input. At this point, I'll turn it over to Kent unless you have questions for me. Peter, uh, is up to speed and involved as well. Um, so he's on the line too. Peter Anderson, our Director of Facilities. So if you have any questions, let me know. If not, I'll just turn it right over to Kent.
Thanks, Bill. Um. Yeah, like Bill mentioned, I'm Kent Gannon with Stantec Consulting Services. We have an office located, um, in downtown New Haven. So we're fairly close by. Um, worked with Bill on a number of projects around town. Um, most recently, the tennis court, um, project next to the Paulson, uh, Middle School. Um, but like kind of Peggy outlined and Bill outlined, you know, we were tasked with, uh, finding a sidewalk, um, route from the school, um, complex, you know, down past where the new elementary school is going to go, um, and then a little further south down Monker Town Road. So the plan I'm sharing here now is kind of an overall look. Um, it's a, an index plan from the plans that we're putting together. Um, as I mentioned, as part of this lots of application, um, so lots of application requires a few things, obviously being, one being a plan set showing that, um, the project here, you're looking to get funding, funding for, um, is feasible, of course. Um, and then we also put a cost estimate together and, you know, gather some other information as part of that overall application. Uh, before I jump into the plans a little bit, I do have the application up here too. Um, and like Peggy mentioned, um, one of the things that lots of will fund is a standalone construction project. So you see that on, on the list. Here's kind of a list of the projects that, um, you can go after with this funding. Um, and those who aren't too familiar with lots of funding, it's essentially a way to access, um, state funds with, um, basically not as much restriction on, on what you can do, not as much oversight. So it's, it's more in the town, town's hands. It's more in the consultant's hands than it is in the state. So you don't have the state kind of breathing down your back the whole time. Um, what I'll do here though is I guess I'll just walk through the plans, um, quickly and just so everyone can get themselves kind of oriented here. Um, like I said, here's the, um, the school site. So you see Paulson, uh, Middle School. Um, it's kind of one section of the limits of the project, and then we take it all the way down to, uh, Darinthal Drive on Monker Town Road. A little hard to see in this, so I'll flip through and we'll get more zoomed in plans here. Um, but you'll see a sidewalk that runs along Monker Town Road. And the background we're using here is a combination of an aerial photo and a survey that was completed as part of the, the Madison Elementary School project, which you see here, and, um, the waterline improvement project that went down Green Hill Road. So I'm actually going to, so everyone can see. So here's Monker Town Road. And then if I change the color quickly. Sorry, there's Green Hill Road. Here's Monker Town Road. Here, here's your elementary school. Here, and then here's your other school complex. So what we really tried to do was, was, was link these two schools together and provide a safe passage for, you know, students, parents, uh, between the two schools and also for everyone who lives in the community, you know, a route for them to get to school. Um, the safe routes to school plan that was, that was done by the town, you know, identified Green Hill Road. It was a tricky, tricky spot for, for pedestrians. There's no sidewalks. There's narrow shoulders. Um, there's some blind spots around some of the corners, you know, particularly around Vorpus Road here. It's a little bit of a tricky, tricky spot. So what we did was we took a look at where we can get the sidewalk, where we can fit it in. And I'll, I'll kind of highlight a couple as we flip through a couple of the, the trickier spots to get the sidewalk. Um, so again, here's Darinthal. So we've just proposed a sidewalk right along the, um, edge of the roadway. Um, one of the things I talked to Bill about is the plans we have now show a concrete sidewalk. Um, if you're going to put aside concrete sidewalk adjacent to a roadway, um, it'll require a new concrete curbing. So there'll be a, a little bit of, um, roadway repair to go along with that. And that's all built into our estimate. Um, a new crossing here at Corinth Drive, continue to the sidewalk northward. Um, what we'll do here at all the driveway locations, you'll see, well, you know, we'll take the sidewalk so it'll meet the driveway, uh, flush. Uh, try to limit any driveway reconstruction that we need to do. That's inconvenient to the neighbors, um, and, and really unnecessary. Most of the driveways along this route are in, in pretty decent shape. So crossing them shouldn't be, um, an issue with the sidewalk. Um, what you'll see here at the limit of this kind of page one is where we tie into the sidewalk that'll be constructed as part of the elementary school. So that's called out here, this limit. Um, this line work here is taken directly from the middle school project. As you see here, so as part of this project, no new sidewalk through this section. Um, this will be all constructed, the sidewalk here, a little hard to see, but there's a sidewalk in here, all constructed as part of the elementary school. And then our project picks back up again, the northern limits of the elementary school. You see a walk coming down from the elementary school, a sidewalk ramp, a new, uh, crosswalk across the driveway, a new sidewalk ramp again. And then this will be our tying point to the elementary school project back up north of Monker Town Road. You see, we've got a couple instances where we're bumping out, um, the sidewalk for, for things like a utility pole that's in the way. Um, so what we like to do is you, you like to maintain four feet of clear on the sidewalk around any sort of utility pole, mailboxes, those sort of things. Um, so that's what we're showing here. We should have plenty of right of way here. There are some trees along here, um, and some other landscaping as part of this project that'll need to be trimmed. Um, those would have to be, um, trimmed back to permit this, the sidewalk construction and have a clear, their path through there. Um, and wrapping the, the sidewalk around the corner, the intersection of Green Hill Road and Monker Town. Um, we bumped the sidewalk out here. And again, this is, I apologize, it's a little difficult to see. There's another utility pole, uh, there. So we're bump out until we get back right adjacent to the roadway. So this, two lines you see symbolizing curb here. So anytime we're adjacent to the roadway, we'll have a new curb. If we kind of get to bump out and we have the snow shelf in here, we won't need the new curb. Um, and there's some areas we, we would like, you know, if we could, to kind of keep the snow shelf, uh, which matches what you have east of the school on Green Hill Road. Um, it's just not feasible in all areas through here. There's, there's different improvements down Green Hill Road. You've got, uh, fencing and utility poles and vegetation that we'd like to leave, uh, where possible. Um, as we work our way east and Green Hill Road towards, uh, the high school in, in Paulson. Um, we get to kind of our first sticking point. So this is that large, we've called it a specimen tree here, uh, from this large tree that's located right along Green Hill Road. Um, we'd obviously like to protect that tree and, and do what we can here. So the idea we've kind of floated around here is kicking the sidewalk out around the tree. Um, there's limited space between the tree and the curb line to fit a sidewalk in there. And, you know, to further limit the damage to the tree, um, we've proposed here a stone dust pathway through this area. Um, what that'll allow us to do is not excavate as deep and, and damage the roots, um, within that tree and within the drip line of the tree. Um, the one, um, issue that does bring up here is the need for an easement. Um, the, this is the right of way line here. So we've outlined a small easement to maintain the sidewalk if we bump out around there. So, um, there'll be a right of way process if this is the route we ultimately take here.
Um, with the. Homeowner been, been, um, informed about this or at this point?
Not at this point. Um, so that, that'll come. Um, we've kind of outlined that in the, in the lots of application. Um, there will be, obviously, I'll call it an extensive public outreach, um, with this. So we'll have, you know, we'll meet with the, obviously the town organizations, but we'll also, um, you know, have a public information meeting where we'll give the residents an opportunity to, to comment on the sidewalk and, and, um, you know, I'll walk through the plans. There's somewhere from my office will walk through the plans again, um, to kind of give them an update on where we stand, what we're going to do now. So, so the charge we have now is really, um, to secure the funding and to show that this is feasible. Yep, go ahead, Peggy.
Well, and I, and I think this is, this is the first step. It was a feasibility study, right? So we didn't even know that there was going to be easement needed until now, until they did the work, right? So, um, this is the first report back on what the sidewalk is, because we didn't even know if it was kind of something you could do. So with all the different, we've all driven down a green hill road and recognized, uh, um, you know, all the different challenges for it. So, uh, so this is the plan that they're proposing that could make this work.
Yep, exactly. And this is by no means the final plan. I'm sure this will, you know, as we progress, um, and work our way eventually towards, uh, construction documents, you know, this plan I'm sure will change, will, will adjust things. You know, maybe we kick the sidewalk back in certain spots to create a snow shelf and, and that sort of thing. Uh, but this was, this was one of the areas. Go ahead.
Uh, Kent, you're describing this as a specimen tree. Does it enjoy some special status? What, what does specimen, um, indicate?
It's just a, it's, it's a tree that can't be taken down. Um.
By what authority, Kent? What, what, this tree have a special status?
Not, not that I'm aware of. Um, I think you get a lot of pushback by.
Yeah. So Al, I do believe it is on a state registry.
That's it. Thank you, Bruce. Yeah.
Um, can you guys see the Google Maps? I'm sure you all, you all know the tree. Um.
Yeah, it's a big old sycamore tree.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Um, so I don't know, Kent, if you wanted to field questions, um, while you're going through these slides or Peggy, if you wanted us to wait until it was over and then we could talk, I, whichever one is fine with me.
I'm fine with either one, um, as well. There's only, I only have a couple more sheets kind of to walk through the, the length of the project. Um, but.
All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we let you?
Why don't you wrap up and then we can kind of take it?
Yes. So the, you know, kind of working eastward as well. The next real sticking point is the Neck River, which runs through here. Um, so in order to cross, there's not enough room, um, on the bridge. The bridge has limited information available. Um, so what we've got outlined here is a, a pre-engineered pedestrian bridge. Um, you've likely seen them around town. It's one that you can, for all intents and purposes, kind of drop in place. Um, it's the quickest way to get a connection through here. Um, there'll be some other work obviously associated with that. This is also where the new water line is going in. So merging the two projects together, um, will be a task we'll have to complete when we finalize, um, design and layout of this. Um, I also show kind of a low gravity block retaining wall along the edge of the sidewalk, um, through here, because there is a drop off on the west side of the river here. Um, one of the big things through here is the, the Neck River has a flood plain and both a flood plain and a floodway identified. So as part of designing this bridge and finalizing the layout of the bridge, uh, we'll need to do a complete long hydraulic analysis of the bridge to make sure we're not impacting, um, flood elevations. So, um, that's really going to be the, the, the most difficult part of this design is finding a bridge that works, um, and doesn't impact those flood elevations. And then here's our final sheet. Um, so it shows the sidewalk within the, the, the school limits. We've got a couple spurs that come in and, and kind of connect some missing pieces, um, as you head towards the school. And then, you know, we'll, we'll drop a new sidewalk ramp here to connect to the sidewalk that is constructed, um, east of the entrance into the Paulson Middle School.
Kent, thank you for the overview. That was awesome. I think Kent showed the details of what he's put into it. It's only a preliminary plan. We got a lot farther to go before we finalize it, but he's highlighted the key, key parts that are, you know, problematic or, you know, you have concern, you know, the specimen tree. I mean, we all know that tree's been there forever. I think, you know, without a significant reason why, I think we try to go around the tree, the bridge crossing, uh, definitely impacted the neighbors. We know there's going to be impact to the neighbors. We need, but until we have a preliminary plan, we're not going to get to meet with the neighbors till the Board of Selectmen tell us that they think it's worth moving forward. You know, we're not, we wouldn't meet, meet with the neighbors. So thank you, Kent.
So maybe we could open up for questions from board members.
Um, I'm interested in the thinking of, of, uh, why is a sidewalk extended on Monker Town Road south of the school? What, what's the thinking for that?
I can answer that. I think that we always talked about connecting the schools together. It was always a concept, especially when we talked about the crossing. We tried to do it through interconnection from the properties. Now we're talking about, you know, on the Green Hill Road because it just, it's, even though it's not a simple process, it's much more practical than going across the, uh, what significant wetland crossing. So that was one of the main reasons, um, that I know of.
I'm sorry, Billy, I didn't ask.
He was talking south on, south of the elementary school, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Darinthal.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. It's, you know, you, you've got a sidewalk at the school and we're going to go through the effort to bring the sidewalk, um, down Monker Town to the school. There's these kind of neighborhoods that would, that can fairly easily be connected, right, to the schools and provide that safe route of travel to the school. So that was really the thinking there. Connect the Corinth Drive and the Darinthal Drive neighborhoods to the schools.
I think, I think we should go further and another phase, go down to the other neighborhoods across 95. Now that's just a preliminary idea. Kent and I have talked about it. So to me, it's about connecting the neighborhoods to the school on a sidewalk that they can walk.
So my first question is, what's, assuming, um, for a moment that this is a project we want to go ahead with, um, who's responsible for maintaining the sidewalks once they're complete? With zoom, the town.
The town in front of the town property and then the private citizens in front of the private citizens property. I think just like it's always been, unless we've changed the rules since I've been here, it's always the owner who owns the property in front of the sidewalks responsible. Peggy, do you disagree?
My understanding is there's a town ordinance that dates back to decades, probably, um, that it's, it's the responsibility of the property owner, um, in front of their house.
Yeah, if it hasn't changed, that's always been the philosophy since I've been here. All sidewalks are the responsibility of the people who.
All right. So, so there's a large portion of the sidewalk that is going to have the, um, plowed snow dumped onto it. We're saying the homeowner is responsible for clearing that snowbank?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Just like down, I think there's no difference in downtown though, right? I mean, that's the business's responsibility downtown, same thing. Just like downtown, I think there's no difference in downtown though, right? I mean, that's the business's responsibility downtown, same thing.
Business and a homeowner. And one of these homes is kind of have, what, close to two hundred and fifty plus feet of sidewalk to maintain that?
Yeah, no, it's, it's gonna be extensive. I mean, this is a different. Philosophy, let's face it, the town didn't want sidewalks, but one of the things we heard loud and clear during the strategic plan. Is people wanted. More safe bike pedestrian friendly uh. Connections and that's gonna require these types of infrastructure, so. Um I think this particular. Location we saw is the benefit to connecting the school campuses. So. I'm just saying, it's a shift in philosophy, right, about, you know. The town, historically, people didn't want sidewalks in this town and we don't have a lot of sidewalks and now people are saying we want sidewalks, so.
Okay, so I hear that, I hear that, but I'm, but my question is. Who do we expect is going to be walking back and forth between the two schools?
Can I make a comment? When we put the sidewalk out in front of Poulsen School, you know, I wasn't in favor of it. I'm like, who's gonna use that? Now I gotta. Take care of it as the facility director for the town, you know, I had to now. Have a huge sidewalk in front of the school. I see people every day walking on that sidewalk. Every day. It's amazing. I I was totally blown away, so. I I I agree with you, Bruce, that it's gonna be a significant impact to the neighbors. And, you know, I don't take that lightly. I think we need the neighbors' input, but. It, I think it will be used and I was wrong when we put it in front of Poulsen School. I thought, who's gonna use it? And I see it every day. So.
Think there's, there's also the advantage too of just, if you think of Green Hill, both those roads actually are quite busy. And uh and they're narrow. I mean, Green Hill, you know, in that little zigzag there is very narrow and I think. You know, offering the opportunity not only for schools, but maybe young families that are out walking their babies or people running, whatever. Um it it's a safety conversation, which I think is, you know, very needed.
We didn't bring that up, but I talked to the police chief. And, you know, safety and traffic on that street and specifically the intersection of Munger and Green Hill, you know. What, what can we do? Is this gonna help it? And, you know, we've had preliminary conversations about it. And I would say they weren't, they were positive, so uh you know. We're gonna look into that if we go to the next step on how we can, you know, is this gonna be a positive on the traffic and safety? And I, my preliminary understanding is the answer is yes.
Balanced conversation, though. I think that if we're talking about the increased safety. Of um. Pedestrians, um and I would argue that pedestrians and bikers don't, uh don't exist in the same space well.
Probably true.
We have to balance it with the impact to the natural resources and the homeowners, right? We talk about going around the sycamore tree. Uh I think we would need an arborist. To give us um. The, the final say on, on how to do that. And then what if the homeowner says they don't want to do the easement?
So those are all legitimate concerns. We have not talked to the homeowners. I'm definitely concerned about the impact to the homeowners myself. But if if the Board of Selectmen does, don't think it's worth moving forward, why do we talk to the homeowners, you know?
And then I don't think we talked about the two large pine trees at the intersection of um. Of Warpus and Green Hill.
We have not. I have with Kent. And Kent believes it's possible, but once again, these are preliminary designs that would, those, that was definitely a concern of mine. I'm like, those two big trees. You know, we haven't talked to the owner. Um you know, for all we know, you know, those are his sacred trees or not, you know, we don't know that. And we haven't talked to him, but I have in the past talked to him on other issues, I believe. You know, he's, they're open minded people that live there, so I I. We haven't talked to the homeowners and we definitely need to if we're gonna go to the next step.
Right, and this is one of those old homes that really doesn't have much setback to it. If you had to go behind the trees, you'd almost be in their front door.
I don't think we're going behind the tr- the.
Yeah, there's, there's space in front of those trees. I mean, there's not a whole lot of space, but there is space to get a sidewalk in there. Um the, the one thing that will need to be relocated in that area, they have a fence which is actually in the, the town right away. That would need to be relocated.
So I, I just want to point out that Kent put a lot of time in to the feasibility of it. We reviewed this a lot. About my concerns, you know, in the areas, you know, that was one of them, the sycamore tree. Um you know, there's others, but you know, no sense in going to the details. It's feasible, it's possible. We do not have a final plan and we haven't talked to the neighbors, but, you know, we do have a grant possibility to build this. And I, I don't think it's a simple, you know, yes or no. I think, you know, if we want to move forward, we need to look into the. You know, the impact to the neighborhood, the town as a whole. And the traffic and safety issues, but we're not there yet until we finalize the plan. I, I think that Kent shows it's feasible. It's, it can be done. Um definitely some issues and concerns we need to address. But, you know, we're not ready to uh come back and say, you know, these are how we're gonna resolve those. The, the crossing over the neck river is. Is significant.
I do have a question in regards to the river. Is there any concern that the addition of more impermeable surface? Is gonna create more runoff and cause issues for the river?
Kent, you wanna handle that one?
Yeah, um. I mean, that's a legitimate concern anytime you're adding more impervious area. The, the, the sidewalk at the river, um we will have a snow shelf, so there is an opportunity for that. To run off into grassed area um and infiltrate into the surface. Um I think the biggest issue really at the, at the neck river is being able to design a bridge and fit a bridge in that doesn't impact. The floodway. And, like I said, we'll do. And all of this will be, you know, part of this hydraulic analysis we'll have to do with the river. Um we'll have to have a survey or cut sections of the river and what we do is we actually model the river and then we run the uh river flows through that model. Um so we do it with existing conditions and we kind of give ourselves, gives us a base flood elevation. We compare that to the FEMA data, I mean, that sort of thing. And then we, we run a model with our new improvements on there too, so the sidewalk. The new bridge and we make sure there's zero impact to that. Flood elevation. Um the, when you have a. When you have a designated floodway, that is the state regulation, you can have zero impact to that flood elevation.
Okay, thank you.
And does your span that you've illustrated here accommodate that floodway?
Yeah, we think this is somewhere in there. This may change slightly. It may get a little wider. I don't think it's gonna get any narrower. It may get a little wider, this, the span there.
Because when you drive by it, it almost looks like the length of the guardrail. Is a good approximation of the floodway.
Yeah, so the floodplain is out there. The floodway is a little narrow, narrower. Than the, than the floodway. Uh the, sorry, the floodplain goes out to like elevation twenty six. Um what we try to do a lot of times and what you can do with these is kind of hide it behind the profile of the existing bridge. Um and it doesn't have an impact, but we won't know what the impact is until we actually start to model that and we're obviously not, not at that point yet. So this, this bridge, the span may change. It most likely, you know, likely will change somewhat and that, you know, we'll probably have to play with the elevation of the. The pedestrian bridge somewhat as well.
Is this sidewalk wide enough to accommodate two people side by side?
Yeah, so this is, we have a five foot sidewalk, which is pretty common. The uh requirement is a four foot wide sidewalk through Proag. But we, you know, typical, typical five foot sidewalk through here.
What's in front of um Poulsen right now?
Good question.
Let me measure it.
He could measure from, from his plan. I wanna say it's five foot, but it might not be.
Looks wide, but. Was there any concern back then, Bill, of four foot versus versus five foot?
The sidewalk at all. I mean, it was just put in and I, you know, I had, there was no dissipation. And other than buying the right equipment to then take care of it, because it's a real. A realistic uh issue that Bruce brought up. Um but. In hindsight, I think. It's a successful project and um I see people walking on it all the time and yes, we have to. We had to increase our snow removal. Uh procedures there. I haven't, I have not heard of one negative issue on it.
Uh Bill, a question I have is um. Uh it's still a little confusing to me, the sidewalk in front of the new school. Yes, does the planning and zoning site plans require a, a sidewalk in front of the new school?
So it was part of the approval. Whether it was required or not, um it, at this point, it was part of the site plan approval and if we wanted to. Not do it, we'd have to go back to them for their approval. And I know when I was at the meetings at. The public hearings. At first, it seemed very strong that the neighbors wanted it and then there was some controversy about who wanted and who didn't. I think there was some changes of opinions, um but, you know, once again, you'll never, when it comes to the public, you know, people have differences of opinions. The planning and zoning approved it. I know it was a conversation and it was a thought out and I, you know. I don't know why, but that's what they agreed to and that's what we proposed, so it would have to be back to P and Z if we remove it.
And um, and so could this project be kind of? Broken up, you know, because I'm just looking at, at, at the reason this whole. Discussion started was because of the new school, right? And the, my understanding was that we were gonna have to put a sidewalk in front of the new school because of the. Site plan approvals. Um and then the discussion was, we, we would love to unite the campuses and also help alleviate and Jack reminded us, Bill, and we talked about this, that. You know, there was a traffic study, I think, done. There's gonna be congestion is, issues at the in, intersection and there are a lot of walkers. In that area and runners. Um so. If you look at the sidewalk, I mean, uh the plan here, obviously, the biggest challenges are along Green Hill Road. Except for maybe that corner, right, at um because of the bridge and and the tree. So I'm just wondering, you know. Do we focus on what we kind of should be doing by having a sidewalk in front of our school, you know, so um. Um or, you know, and then. Hold on for phase two, you know, if we, the, if there's a desire to continue, obviously, there's some concerns from board members. Once again, this was seen as an opportunity right now, because I'm being told by the cog, we could get this, all this funded through this money. Um so I would hate to pass up an opportunity and then a couple years down the road, people are like, why don't we have a sidewalk connecting the campuses, right? And then there's no money left, so um but I'm just thinking in terms of the school itself on Munger Town Road. You know, could we? Truncate what we think we're gonna have to do um because of the. Site plan approval and have that like be, and and phase it, you know? And apply for just phase one.
If you're asking my opinion first, you know, we did do a traffic study, you know, the traffic study did indicate that the school could go there and the traffic would be. You know. Would, would work. Uh the roads can handle the traffic. Um the, the, the second point is that. Jack and I, we, and you were there, Peggy, we talked about increasing the safety of the intersection. We talked about, you know, better safety. And in, we're talking that to increase the visual intersection and the uh, the pedestrian and and. Traffic safety. We talked about it making it better. And yes, the, 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 we could truncate it, I, I assume, but. I, you know, I, I personally think it needs to be vetted through the, the neighborhoods and the public and I think that. You know, if we just do one section, I, I don't know what section we do. I wanna go all the way down to Sandalwood. As a concept plan and and move forward with the big picture and find out from all the neighbors what they think, because. You know, just like you guys are elected officials, I've been working for the town a long time. I know we do what the town wants, we, you know. We think we know what we want, but if the town says we want to do something different, we work for the town. So how do you know until you get the input from the neighbors?
Well, I, I don't disagree that we should take this, you know. Uh understanding that certain individuals are gonna be impacted a lot more than others, certain property owners, right? Um but we do need to do, make broader decisions that are appropriate for the, for, you know, the. Broader community. Um but I'm thinking timing wise, right? Because we got this new school, there's construction going on there. Um when would this, if we were to pull the trigger and get this money quickly? When would they be? They're looking to do this sidewalk, aren't they? Before the new opens or is it something?
The, the schedule for this, if the Board of Selectmen approve this application. And we successfully get it, we, we talked about in the next couple of months, we might hear. Um and then it will take another couple of months for the, do the final design and plans and put it out the bid for fall. Of this year for installation and construction of summer of twenty five. That's what we talked about. Um all of which was a preliminary conversation that I had with, with Kent about if we wanted to move this forward, what's the schedule? And uh we thought construction over summer of twenty five was practical.
Okay.
Yeah, the kind of, the wild card in it, yeah, the, the wild card in it is, so, so what happens with the application, the lots of application, it goes to the cog? If the cog's okay with it, they may have some minor comments here or there. It goes to the state. So the wild card's really the state. How long does the state sit on it before they? Agree to fund the project. Um they don't have, I can't give you a definitive deadline, like they have to make a. Decision in thirty days and sixty days, so sometimes they sit there. For a while, unfortunately.
Okay, um so that's where I think like, you know, the vetting this broader and the community is gonna take time, obviously, the bigger plan, so. Um, you know, I was just trying to think, and, and, and this is not an action item on today, this is a discussion, so that here's, this is the first time I'm seeing actually the plans for this. There's been talks I've had with the staff and stuff, but. And um so I'm just trying to think through. You know, should we focus on what we really should be doing with the new school opening in twenty twenty se- five and construction going on? And um and try to, you know, carve this up into two phases and then we take more time about the broader plan, have more community meetings, getting feedback from the public. We, I, I'm guessing we could. Apply, have two applications. For one application is phase one, uh you know, the, the second is phase two. Um I'm assuming Kent, you, you know, lots of probably better than I would. I would think that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can do that. I'm not sure, we've done that through our office, um or how closely they want to see like kind of. Back to back applications for almost the same project.
They prefer to see it as one broader.
I, I would, I would.
Obviously more cost effective, you know.
Yeah, I would, I would think that's probably the way they'd want to see it rather than having to process multiple applications. I also don't know, you know, it might be an option if you, if you get the whole thing funded, you, you might just build it in phases. They might be okay. With that route.
I just worry too, I mean, if you break it up in phases, sometimes the reality of going back to it is slim. Um I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I would advocate doing the project all in one um swoop. You know, I think it benefits the community. I think it benefits safety significantly in this area. Um it's something that our strategic plan called for and people have been asking for, um but I think it does, you know, it does. You know, we need, we need to pause and make sure that we're doing all the right steps with the community and, and talking to the neighbors. Um I also think we should look at the um, the ordinance. Uh you know, that, that is out there and maybe we consider, you know, there's a, a maintenance piece of this that we look at as a town. I, I watch Bill cringe as I say that, but. It might be a nice service to provide, uh you know, as a, as an additional point to the neighbors, given that, you know, it's. Cutting up their property too, so.
Well, I'd like to follow up Scott's comment. Um. Uh a previous town council advised a previous Board of Selectmen. I think when we were doing the railroad avenue sidewalk. That this was a state requirement that the homeowner take care of the sidewalk. Um I'm gonna suggest we, we might want to ask our current town council just what. Uh public policy is at the state level at the moment, because I think uh Scott and Bruce have identified. Uh what's gonna be a real sticking point with the public. Um and the question was not just snow plowing. I remember railroad avenue, the question became. What if the sidewalk itself needs maintenance in terms of uh construction or repair? So it extended beyond snow plowing.
We have got those answers regardless.
Right.
Yeah.
The answer is clear, it's, it's the, it's the all homeowners.
Jen's trying to speak here, so Jen, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, I'm just looking at this house that's specifically on this corner. I mean. If we measured out what the length of that sidewalk is that's surrounding just their property, that's significant and then. You know. If there's snow and people are regularly using this to get to and from the new school. Uh that's a huge expectation on that homeowner to have that cleared in time for school, so I think um. Serious conversations need to be had with the homeowners.
Hundred and three feet, Jen. There you go.
Well, I think that's more than, I think that's more than the corner property, but, but still, um, I, I, I would like to add, um. We talk about runners and walkers and bikers. Um, I, I'd like to see how many homes would actually be served by this, um, sidewalk. Let's assume that every single home has got a school age child in it, um, and that every single child in that home would use the sidewalk. How many is that? Um. I'm not sure that's a realistic number, Bruce. The reality is like, when you think about like, how I might walk to school, my route might include. Walking across the street and getting on the sidewalk from a different neighborhood. So, yeah, I think you need to also then consider the surrounding neighborhoods too.
Yeah, but I mean, would you include Neck Road in that neighborhood?
No, 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 no. Well, I don't know, are they, are they walkers? Are they walkers? Cause if they're, if they are, then we're improving their safety.
Well, no, I, I don't, I mean, uh. I, I think I have kids that live in this route and they don't, they don't walk to school.
But that may change with the new school. I'm sure routes are gonna change.
Well, and, and this is the, you know, there's an overall philosophy that, you know, there's an approach, safe streets for school. It's, and it's trying to transition us back to that versus using cars, right? And buses all the time. So it's trying to, you know, get people back to walking and biking. And finding safe places that they can access things. And so if there weren't a school here, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. But this is like, how much of our population is gonna be, uh, a school population once, you know. Ryerson closes, it's what, seventy-five percent of our school population is gonna be concentrated in this area, um, and to have no sidewalks.
Yeah, but, but.
So.
About seventy-five percent of our population is going to be within a reasonable walking distance. The number of homes is relatively fixed in that area. There's, there's not a lot of opportunity for new construction. So we should be able to say, this is the universe this sidewalk would serve. And to Scott's point, you could extend the circle out, um, a little bit to say that somebody might walk. Quarter of a mile to get to the sidewalk. Um, but.
Like the families on Norton Town as an example, like they could then come over and walk and catch the sidewalk and, and get to their, their elementary school or, or Poulsen.
Well, and, and keeping in mind that the schools themselves create more traffic, right? So between parent pickup and drop offs and stuff like that, so to have a safe place for people to walk while those activities are occurring. Um, I think is a benefit, at least in front of the schools, right? The connection piece, I, I understand that. This was something we talked about, wanna unifying our campuses. And, 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 and allow for safe travel between all of this. That's the purpose of this, right? So, um.
It's bigger than a school.
Obviously, it's, it's, it's a, you know, it's raising a lot of issues, you know, it's a lot of things that we have to think through. Um, it's a shift in mentality, uh, for the town. Um, and so I, I'm just trying to think, I think we're obviously not voting on anything today. This is the first time we've had a discussion about this. Um, we've broadly had discussions about this, but, um, um, I think we then need to kind of reflect on how we wanna. Go forward on this. Obviously, you're not getting clear direction to apply for the grant. We have to vote on that anyway. Um.
So the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in, in addition to sort of the population served number. Um, the bridge over, um, the Neck River was built in eighty-three. And so I, I'd like to know where we are in the lifespan of that bridge. And are we five years away from having to do something significant there?
No, it's a good question. I will have to talk to Public Works about.
Or are we twenty-five years away, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, I don't know when the last time.
Aren't they all rated?
Yeah.
I don't want to, um, I don't want, like, to, to, to Bill's big nightmare is put solar panels on the roof and then have to, have to replace the roof. Um, you, you'd hate to see all this construction go in around the bridge and then have to replace the bridge.
Right.
I'll, I'll see what.
Um. My structural department can dig up. We do a lot of the load ratings around the state, so we'll see what we can get on that bridge.
I still think too, I know, I know we're talking a lot about the, Bruce, your sort of your circle and your neighborhood and all that, but to me, it's. It's not just about the school connectivity, it's just safety in those roads in general. I, I think it's bigger than just the schools. It's, you know, to what Billy was talking about earlier, there's a lot of people that are gonna use these sidewalks outside the school hours too, um, for just safe.
And so let's try to put a number on that. Let's, let's.
Can you?
So, so, well, I mean, if we can use a word a lot qualitatively, we should be able to put some sort of estimate around it.
But, but I think you're, you're, it's a behavior change is what you're not, if it's, it's not there, so people feel unsafe using the roadway. For walking and because there's no safe place to walk right now. So how do you forecast that? We think, you know, I just think in general, we heard from the community, they want safe, more safe places to walk. So I don't know how you forecast that. I don't think we'll get a mathematical number to, to do that. I think this is just gonna be. We're changing our philosophy and policies around this, um, and are, do we wanna do that? To me, the biggest thing that you brought up is the maintenance issue. I think that's something, you know, it's very different down a railroad avenue. The example that Al used, where it's a very small amount of sidewalk that you're being required to shovel every morning, right? But here, it's far more expansive. Um, but I also wanna highlight that. All, I've lived all over the country and a lot of places have big houses and they have big sidewalks in front of them too. So communities deal with this, right? It's, i- is it a priority for us to provide this or is it not? And I, I'm, you know, I think we just have to really make that call and, and decide if we think it's, you know. The directions we should be going in from a policy standpoint and, um. And then we have to obviously get neighbor to, I think the, the bigger thing is letting the community weigh in on this.
Yeah, I think that's really important to have the community weigh in. Because, you know, in a lot of other communities, you buy a house that already has that sidewalk there. It's not that you bought the house with the property and now, oh, we're gonna give you an extra responsibility that you never signed up for in the first place. Maybe you wouldn't have bought that house, you know, had you known that was a responsibility. So the public input on this is absolutely essential.
Yep, I agree.
Maybe what we do is just have a public hearing on this.
Get sort of a litmus, a litmus test almost.
And, and this has not been, one of the steps we would take is this would go and we would consult with our bicycle pedestrian committee as well. Which, you know, but we can't do it without a plan and understanding what it involves, right? And the impact, you know, so that's where this was step one. Um, but at the same time, I'm very conscious of time too, cause I'm trying to be efficient because of the new school construction, right? So, um, and trying to align that with it. Um, so maybe what we do, and I'm just putting this out there, is what if we did. Uh, schedule a public information session, not a formal public hearing. Um, and maybe we do it with the bicycle and pedestrian committee, I could talk to the chair, um, and, you know, maybe they think this is a terrible idea. Maybe they're like, this is the last place we should be putting a sidewalk. We want it X, Y, and Z. We don't know, right? Um, so this kind of evolved out of the new school plans and, um, and a different path. So, um, so what if I, you know, spoke to the chair there? And then either we can just schedule this, a, a, a public information session, it doesn't have to be a formal hearing and have a conversation about it.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And then, uh, and then I would imagine inland wetlands and, um, and the newly, um. Chartered or soon to be chartered coastal resiliency, which is also gonna be a flood and erosion. Or I think they would need to.
Well, they'll have to do that with permitting and everything. That would all have to go through there for permitting.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you can't, you'd have to go through a whole regulatory process with this, uh.
And then the trees, um, you know, the, the, we, we, we need some sort of expert guidance on the trees.
Sure, yeah, no doubt. But I think to me, like, all these things are surmountable, right? They're all overcome, you know, as long as we get the public support. You know, to me, the, the safety point and, and all the, the benefits to me are, are huge, and it's what the public told us they wanted, so. I'm super supportive of that. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for us, um, at, at no cost.
Okay, so why don't we, if, if everybody's in agreement, I'll figure out this public information session. Um, and I guess Bill and Stan Tech. To be continued, unfortunately, you know, so it might not work great with the timeline, but we'll just have to figure this out, okay?
We're happy to work at your schedule, whatever you want. We understand. And we all agree that there's input from the public is, is really important. I think that Jen pointed out the neighbor, that's one of my concerns as well, the impact of that neighbor on the corner. Um, you know, there's definitely some neighbor input we need, so I don't know when you get that, do you get that? Do, do we wanna talk to the neighbors before we apply or after we get the funds and we haven't done the next step?
I think that we're gonna, we're gonna have this public information session first, and we're gonna make sure that the neighbors are aware of this, so we can get their feedback.
We invite them to the information session personally?
Yeah.
Cause, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we can do a, uh, well, we will do a townwide, you know, notice on this. But then we can ring fence contacting people directly impacted by this, if they'd like to come. And we can just show the plans and talk about the objectives and then get feedback. And, uh, you know, this is, this was not because, this was trying to solve a problem. It, it, it came as part of the conversation with the new school. The, the requirement of a sidewalk in front of at least Mugertown, the school itself is part of the zoning approval right now for this project. So, um, you know, so that's another thing that we need to probably talk about later, a- after the public information session, like, do we just break this up? And then, or just don't even phase it, just do the school. Um, or if there's a change in thinking of that, then we have to figure that out with, uh, with zoning, right? So, um, okay, all right, well, thank you, uh, Kent, uh, and Bill, um, appreciate the. Uh, you know, being able to answer a lot of questions and then I'll.
Thank you guys.
About Kent, we would need you probably to, you know, and to kind of walk over this plan, um, as part of any kind of public session that we have, okay?
Sounds good. Peggy, I'm gonna put in a plea again that we talked to town council to understand any constraints we might be under in terms of state policy.
Oh, for sidewalks and all that, yeah. And I've not actually seen the ordinance. I was just always told since I came in here that there was this ordinance that we have. So I think it's important if we start adding more sidewalks, which we have been doing, we have a construction project going on. We need to refresh maybe how we approach this, right? Uh, you know, and I think those were all really important, um. Uh, issues that were raised, uh, and well thought out, so, um. Okay, great. All right, uh, we'll move on then, uh, to item number nine.
Thank you.
And, um, item number nine is discussion of the visitor, visitor center activity staffing and townwide welcome and wayfinding sign project. I kinda lumped a lot of stuff in there, so, uh, just to cover a couple of different things we wanted to talk about. Um, and I've invited, uh, the, um, director, uh, of the chamber, uh, Dawn Jackson. I think you've all met her, but she's never, have you officially been to our meeting since you've joined? Probably not.
Um, no, I have not.
Okay, great. And then I've got Erin, uh, our town planner, joining us also. Um, and, uh, Austin Hall, who sits on the chamber board and has been working closely with, uh, with Dawn on things. Um, so we have a visitor center downtown that is in the powder house, I guess they call the building, right? Uh, and, um, it's a shared space with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce that has been using that building for many years. And it's been a nice partnership, right? Um, and, and that visitor center has been staffed by volunteers, particularly one woman. Uh, Betty White, who's been doing it for a very long time. Um, and she is, I think, trying to hand the reins to somebody else now. Um, and what she's been responsible for is really managing and making sure that we have staffing at the visitor center. Um, so we kinda need to think the next phase now, right? We're moving on. And we wanna talk about the visitor center, the impact it has for the chamber, being located where it is, and then staffing going forward. Um, and I think that, um, you know. My first reaction was like, who goes to visitor centers anymore, right? Everybody uses Google or whatever. But, and I'll let Dawn maybe spend a few minutes, cause she's been living with it for the last six months, right? Talk a little bit about the activity that goes on there and the value that a visitor center brings. So if you wouldn't mind, Dawn, just talking for a few minutes about kind of what activity you've been seeing in there and, um, your conversations with Betty and the volunteers.
Yeah, you know, it's, I, I myself, when I started last August, last July. I thought, oh, the visitor center, that's a nice add-on to a community. And I've used them when I've gone to other towns for, oh, do you have a restroom type of thing? But I have been really surprised at the volume of people that come through here. How I gauge the volume is, um, there's a clipboard, a good old fashioned clipboard at this large table when you enter. And, um, we ask people to sign in. I manually counted them, actually over Christmas break for twenty twenty fours, twenty twenty three's number. We had over eight hundred twenty-five people come through the doors last year that we had sign in. That's not guaranteeing everybody signed in. Everyone, people who come in here are more than one p- one person on occasion. So you figure over a thousand people have been welcomed to Madison. With that said, we have a display of visitor brochures. That consist of everything from camping to Shoreline Greenway Trail to restaurants, retail stores. Service providers and nonprofits in the community and, and in Connecticut abroad. So this is information that people come in and ask for, along with using a public restroom. And they love that this is a historic building. They think it adds charm to their visit. And we tell them how it's a former police station and the powder room that, you know, it stored gunpowder back in its day. So it's, um, a very personalized touch point. I, um, Betty White, it's my understanding, has been doing this for a couple of decades, almost. Two decades, and she shared that she's actually come across some health issues. Actually, since she shared with me that she was gonna be stepping down, so she even has more of a need now. Um, while she was traveling, she has, uh, two artery issues. So, um, she, uh, I said to her, okay, walk me through the process. So every Friday and Saturday, the visitor center is manned with volunteers. Their shifts are split into two, ten AM to one PM, and then a second shift of one PM to four PM. I generally am working, I work here on Fridays. So I'm here for the most part, unless I'm going in and out of a meeting, otherwise I put a note on the door. But interestingly enough, this week alone, um, I had two people in here yesterday. And last week with it, uh, the visitor center is officially opened. Memorial Day to Columbus Day is the published open hours, if you will. But when we're here as chamber, as a chamber staff, we're welcoming people, of course, and letting them use the public facility. So, um, I had a meeting with the visitor center volunteers on April twenty-fourth. I had several, uh, volunteers come and be a part of that meeting. We talked about policy and procedures. I have a, a document that I retyped for them and updated, which I'll gladly share. Um, with anybody who needs to take a look at that, now that this is coming out into, um, this forum. Um, I do, I did create the. Memorial Day to end of June calendar for people to sign up for volunteer spots to come in and fulfill their duties. Um, we do have a couple of the spots filled. Um, I'm optimistic about volunteers being here. I think that it's just, I, um, Betty, I think, would pick up the phone and call them. Um, I email them. As you can suspect, there's a generational situation of people. Being more digital versus a phone call and so on and so forth. So, um, I do have Emily, who's here in my office, who if there's, um, an opportunity, although she's only part-time. She might be able to be available if there's more hours that are granted for any type of position. Um, and I can also manage the calendar. However, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it will always be filled on a Saturday. Which, it's, you know, it's, depends on the weather, it depends on what's happening in town. It depends on what the town is marketing for people to come and visit. Um, but as I shared, there was about a thousand people that came through the door last year.
Yeah, um, so I think that, you know, we don't have a, we, we don't have a answer for this right now. Um, I think the, uh, that I wanted the board to kind of start thinking about this. I think we're gonna have to think longer term about what we're gonna do. Austin did come up with a creative solution that he thought if we're gonna have a gap in coverage, um, cause he does have seasonal staff. It would mean, though, he doesn't have it budgeted right now, that, you know, and he talked about, could we, as a stopgap? It would mean, though, he doesn't have it budgeted right now that, you know, and he talked about, could we, as a stopgap, use ARPA funds potentially, uh, for the summer to get, make sure that things are staffed appropriately and that we're committed to doing this. Um, or do we just take the approach, if we don't have the volunteers, we don't have the, the service, right? Uh, so I wanted to talk about that, I didn't propose any ARPA funding today. I think there's a longer term conversation, because I think as Academy gets open, we might want to think about having that be the location of a visitor center, because we're gonna have staffing in there seven days a week already, right? So maybe we create some sort of area in, in the lobby of Academy that is informational. Um, but I don't, we don't have any plans right now, and I think to, to Dawn's point, there's something charming about what's there now, right? The location it's at now. Um, so, um, and I think also, I just wanted to highlight, I think Dawn is, you know, taking a fresh look at the chamber and looking at a lot of things that we kind of have been on a, uh, the chamber has done things a certain way for a long time, and so she's looking at refreshing things and doing things differently. Um, so I think it's good that we start having that dialogue, so we understand changes that the chamber's making and the impact it's gonna have on the town and, and um, and because there's different programs that the chamber runs with like the, uh, well, we've already talked about downtown lighting, we're gonna be talking a lot more about that, how we work through the whole downtown lighting project and how we fund that. Um, and then, uh, some of the other things with the baskets, you know, some of the decorative things that have really been driven through the chamber. Um, you know, um, you know, I know that, you know, the, the chamber saying, well, it, should that be us driving this going forward, right? Uh, so we're gonna be talking about all that, I would prefer to keep status quo for now until we have our plan for the next plan or the new phase, right? Um, but, uh, um, so I, I guess thoughts on the visitor center right now and then openness to staffing it if we can't get the volunteers, you know, obviously on the, on the dime of the town. Um, and Austin, way in too, if you have some specific thoughts, but I thought you came up with some creative, you know, a creative solution possibly for the summer.
There is one thing, Madison Youth and Family Services, um, Austin, um, or I'm not sure who would look into this. They do have a grant program for, um, a staff to be paid through a grant program for people that they're serving. I'll gladly forward you any information about that. Um, there may be a possibility, again, that the, the uncertainty of when will a volunteer be here versus not, that's the, you know, I can, I can look and I could say, look, every Friday morning, we'll definitely be here, I can, I'll schedule meetings for after one o'clock, right? So I can, I can look and do that. Um, because really Friday afternoons with that, um, with the farmer's market, it does get busy some days, but then there are some days where not one person will walk through the door. Um, so there's, so Mass and Youth and Family Services does have this program um, happening, that's a, a grant opportunity where they're trying to get people work experience.
Yeah, they do that every summer, I'm familiar with that, um, so, uh, that's a good idea too, it's something, but I, I guess for, you know, I'm curious to hear the board's thoughts, board members' thoughts about, you know, going outside of the norm where I think in the past is you had some volunteers and if they weren't there, then we just didn't staff it, right? Um, or do we want to commit to making it regularly staffed?
Well, I like your idea of transitioning over to the community center when it's done, I think that's a fabulous idea. As far as ARPA funds go, I think I would rather see the ARPA funds go into some sort of weatherproof kiosk that could be a twenty-four hour self-serve, maybe with the idea that it could be moved, so place it in front of the powder house to start with the idea that it gets moved over to the community center, that way if this, if the, um, uh, um, visitor center is closed, somebody walking up after hours or during the, the odd times that we don't have staffing, they can at least see the, um, the brochures and, and materials that, the maps and all of that that are, that are there.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I like, there would have been conversation of something like that with, I think, Michelle Dawn during COVID.
Okay.
Well, we kind of have that downtown at the, the clock.
That's posters, oh, that's right, okay. Well, they wanted to go to an electronic type of format.
Robust than that, but.
I, I mean, i- i- I think there was some sort of idea though, an electronic format for something that's was more, um.
Like a digital kiosk?
Yeah, and, uh, that did come up and, and I think that we never got a request for it, you know, it was kind of discussed, and I said, well, we could put in a request through the ARPA committee, and I don't think it just ever got to materialize, obviously, there was different things going on at the time, but, uh, um, but any other board members thought, so I think that's a great idea, Bruce, maybe we can look into that, because then it's more of a thing that'll carry on beyond the summer. Um, you know, Jen.
And Dawn's point about the Youth and Family Services, I, I remember that Scott talks about this every year, um, that he's got monies that are set up specifically, you know, to get young people work experience. I think that this is a great thing and it's not a real high skill job, I don't want to discount the, um, the work that people put into it, but I think it's a natural, um, thing for a young person to do.
I, I could kind of speak to that a little bit, we've, I've had folks through that program work for me for a few years now and they do need some supervision, so I think it would still require someone to be there with that individual to, to work the shift.
Okay, this, is this an opportunity, uh, you know, we're sort of clearly at a, a pivotal point here, right? Where we're starting to think about the community center and, and there's some transitions going on, Dawn, and in your group and, and others, right? Is, is there an opportunity here where we consider more virtual versus human bodies to staff of, of a visitor center? I just, it's, it almost seems like an old school model versus a new school model. Um, so I don't know, it's just food for thought, but i- it seems very employee, you know, person, body. Um.
You know, it's interesting, if I had a quarter for every person that came in for a town map.
I bet.
I mean, seriously, it's, I, I was really surprised, and the restroom during the summer. And people actually appreciate a conversation, like, it's, the dynamic is, and maybe it's a generational thing to your point, right? When I had the shredding event on Saturday, my first shredding event, I thought, how successful is this gonna be? And I have a budget by them, right? I paid two hundred eighty-five dollars an hour for a shredding company. I was pray- I was shocked at the amount of people that came out and shredded documents. Because I don't, it doesn't mean I'm the norm, right? So it's the median of what's, what's in our community. And from what I'm hearing, yesterday I had somebody come in here from Woodbridge. He came in for a map, our directory, looking at restaurants, wanted to hear about the town. He's looking to move here and the general, the people that I'm seeing moving here or coming here are definitely not ch- people with children. From what's coming into this center, I would bet probably I've had eight to fifteen people, almost a dozen people on average in the past two months come in here, like that, it's, it's, it's amazing.
And, and I think that, that local knowledge, you don't get that really online, um, and that was one of the things that, um, you know, our economic development director position had started building, and we do have, we're gonna be launching. And I've got, you know, now that we don't have direct support for this position, um, this tourism website that we already had kind of invested in last year. So there'll be a online resource for stuff, you know, for, to pull all this together more, not, because you go to the town website and you're overwhelmed, right? With regulatory stuff, how do you pay your taxes, you know, that kind of stuff. This is more oriented towards broader information for people visiting or living in the community for amenities. Um, and, and so, um, you know, that is a resource we've started to put some dollars behind and will be rolling out. And then how we partner that with the old school approach with Academy, which I think is gonna be more of an efficient thing. Um, I think, um, I think we've got to think about it and there, and there may be, I think what Bruce was alluding to, Scott, was this kind of other, you know, unmanned type of kiosk opportunity, and I've heard you can do, there's electronic versions of this too, you know? Um, but obviously the cost is a problem, we'd have to look into it, um, so we're, there's a lot of.
Manpower, the manpower thing just always seems to be a challenge, right? And, and competent manpower too, right? It can't just be a kid off the street, you need somebody who can answer some of the questions.
Well, a- and I'm wondering how, you know, I know, Don, we did speak about this a wa- a ways back, but, um, have we really made an effort, the town has not made an effort to recruit people, right? And maybe we should start reaching out, you know, with, as we do with our, uh, digital resources and social media resources to look for those people who are maybe recently retired and have lived here for thirty years and would love to spend, you know, a couple hours welcoming a new family to town and, um, we could look for more volunteers. So it sounds like there's a resistance to using like our, our beach and rec staff to fill the gap, and so maybe we look for other options this summer and then, um, and I'll, I, I think, um, the other thing I did want to mention is that we want to honor Betty with her years of service for doing this, and that's gonna be coming back to us over the next month or two to, uh, you know, the board to honor her for her service, because I think she's played an important role and done a wonderful thing with this visitor cer- center and is very passionate about it. Um, and, um, so maybe we leave it with that, Dawn, that we're gonna try to get more volunteers, um, we'll figure, figure, you know, and then we'll look at some different options, um, and I think we'll hold off on this ARPA, you know, using staff, uh, beach and rec staff for this a- a- at the moment and kind of work it through, okay?
Would you like me to, I, I'm happy to create a flyer to put downtown at our kiosk looking for, uh, volunteers. Um, and Austin.
Maybe we could put it at the senior center as well.
I was just gonna say, Austin, something for at the senior center. Um, and I could send it to you if it's something that you want to digitally email blast out or put on media.
That, I think that would be great, like an informational thing, and then I could give it to Rita here, and she could create some sort of push, um, through our channels. Um.
We know, do we know, just curious, like, what's the trend for these visitor centers, you know, across the towns like we serve, is, is this a thing that people still support and staff?
You know, I would, I would think that that would have fallen into what Sherry was developing in the EDC, that's part of community engagement and attract attractiveness. I went out to the Hamptons over Easter week and, um, or before, and I, I was in Southampton and used theirs and it was fully staffed. Old Saybrook, their chamber is in their visitor center, Guilford has a manned kiosk. So it, they, they are around, it's. And again, it's that public bathroom portal too, I believe.
Yeah, a- and, and that's come up a lot, you know, from, uh, we talked about that a lot during the, I think, the ARPA CIP process too about. Um, and really, as we talk about Academy, maybe we need to think it that way a little bit more with the building committee, you know, I think, uh, Austin, you, you attend those pretty regularly, but that's something that we just need to make sure that we're kind of thinking about that, that there's gonna be people coming in and using the facilities there, um, as a public restroom.
Yep, and a lot of people use next door, the probate court, I see them all the time.
Yeah, yeah. And, and there was a lot of conversation, like, this is like two years ago about this, we, we looked at actually taking ARPA funds and creating a project around putting something down there. And, um, you know, the facilities, new facilities committee that just kind of launched is gonna be looking at all of those buildings and figuring out what are we doing with each of these buildings, especially if we vacate Youth and Family Services building, you know, and then your building and Memorial Town Hall, how are we utilizing all that space? Um, so, uh, so a lot more decisions and discussion have to be had. So, um, I know that Erin's been waiting patiently here and I, I included her on this agenda item, it's actually gonna be related to ARPA. But the other thing that's important is welcoming people to town, if we've put up new welcome signs. And I know Betty was very passionate about having a sign identifying the visitor center. Um, but also wayfinding, just a couple of directional signs pointing people to key points of interest. We have some very old ones still up, um, I know there's one at the circle, there's one down on the way to Hammond Asset. Um, and when we did this ARPA project initially, we said, let's just get the welcome signs first and then we're gonna come back with a second phase that would include the wayfinding. Um, and, uh, so I think, um, you know, we could just move this on to the, the ARPA funds request, but, you know, we're trying to be, you know, holistic, I know for uh, Dawn right now, the only, there's like one visitor center sign, I think, down at seventy-nine, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then on Post Road, it's a, an A-frame sign.
That you put out, that's right, okay, yeah, okay, all right. Um, so, you know, as we develop the, the wayfinding signs, we have to decide, do we put, or do we make these flexible that we can add? Do we want to keep the visitor si- in a center on there, do we not? You know, it was kind of, I kind of wrapped it up in this whole conversation, but, um, but we could probably move on to item ten and he- Erin, we can talk about it when we talk through the project. Is there any questions for Dawn right now? We're gonna be coming back soon, the EDC is gonna be working on that downtown lighting. We decided we're gonna do this earlier now, so that conversation is gonna start. Um, but any other questions for Dawn now, and maybe we just have you and, you know, um, a John Mather from the chamber, just have an overview of kind of the things that have been going on with you and the changes and um, some of the way you're kind of looking at your different, you know, uh, activities, fundraising activities and things like that, that might be a good opportunity to talk further about that, and I know Bruce, you're on the board now, right, of the chamber?
I am.
Okay, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll plan on that then, all right?
Excellent, I do think Bruce's idea for a kiosk, um, to Scott's point, um, a lot of towns are doing, looking at doing things like that. It's a very progressive, smart approach, even if you have um, important town information to share and such like that, if you've got that digital, um, flexibility, um, there's important things that you may be able to use that in a much more, um, diverse way, rather than just thinking visitor information. And I am meeting with three other chambers on the shoreline, we're looking at doing initiatives.
Okay.
And apps, we're talking about apps.
Oh, yeah, okay, good, and, and, um, I would dig around in the files, because there was something that was discussed that was like an electronic board, um, and it, it, I think it was more in front of the movie theater to replace it with an electronic messaging board, but that concept, right? So you might, there might be something there that's a product that's out there that might be worth, we can talk more about that, and that could be something we can come back and see if it's, ARPA funds would be appropriate for that.
Super, I'll follow up with you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Um.
Bye, thanks.
So we'll, we'll, uh, moves, move on to item number ten, um, and Erin, you can just stay on. Um, discuss the status of ARPA funds and related projects. Uh, I think currently, we, we kind of gave an update that, you know, there's a chunk of money that we're still waiting on and vetting, and we're hoping to have that all cleared up by June on some of these projects, that's leftovers from projects. Um, and then we had some actual funds, I think we were at a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, I don't know if Stacy's on, she sent me an email. Hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, right now, uh, in ARPA funds. Um, and so there were a couple of things I wanted to move forward on, um, that we identified, um, uh, I, you know, one is completely new, and I'll let Austin speak to that. Uh, one is the wayfinding signs, which I kind of teed up during several meetings that we wanted to expand the sign project. Um, and that's what, uh, Erin had put an estimate together for that. And then the third one is kind of new, but not really, it's, uh, um, increasing our hybrid technology for two more public spaces. We are really space constrained now to, everybody wants hybrid meetings and we don't have the good technology in a lot of rooms. Um, and we had kind of had some funding for this two years ago, we said we're just gonna stop, we're gonna focus on, you know, that, the, the fishbowl. Um, and I think we, our, might have returned some funds at one point, because we decided not to move forward, but then now having lived through post-COVID adjustments, we're, we're recognizing that we need to have, you know, more spaces available that can do a re- a, a hybrid meeting effectively. And so, um, he was looking at the police community center room and then, um, the senior center dining hall room, so. Maybe what I'll, do you want me to just, I'll do, right, read item eleven and then we can have a formal discussion. Um, so item number eleven is discuss and take action to approve round eighteen ARPA funding request for seventy-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars pending Board of Finance approval for A, twenty-one thousand dollars for the replacement of the circle bachi courts, B, twenty- A twenty-one thousand dollars for the replacement of the Surf Club bocce courts, B twenty-eight thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of townwide wayfinding signs, and C. Twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for technology upgrades to the police community room and senior center dining hall. Make it a second? Okay, Al, second? Okay, great. Okay, so the first project is the bocce courts, and this is one where I think. Austin's wheels were spinning when he was at the last meeting, when we were talking about ARPA funds. If you could give some background on the bocce courts.
Sure, thank you. So we have, if you're familiar, we have six bocce courts at Surf Club in the back towards Garvin Point. And they're used very frequently. We have a very large senior bocce league that meets there twice a week with ninety. Plus people. There's another group that meets on Tuesday mornings early, and then just general public use throughout the spring and summer. So this was an Eagle Scout project approximately fifteen, twenty years ago. And they are in need of repair. So my plan before this was to use my planned and cycled maintenance. Account to replace two of them this year and then continue to do that plan. Over the next several years. If we do move forward with the ARPA funding, this will save us about six thousand dollars. By doing it all at the same time. And we'll be able to get this project done if approved in about a two-week time period. Which will not affect the league play that we have on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We'll work around all of that. And make sure that they're available for the public as well.
So I, you know, I think this perked up as a, this is an outdoor activity. It's very popular with seniors, you know. And just get it done, you know, rather than have to trickle this through planning side. Because I, my first question is, why was this put in a CIP project? Well, he's like, well, each court. You know, it was one of these things where it's not like a hundred thousand dollar project. And he was just going to kind of try to tick away at it over the next couple of years. So getting this done right now and getting them all cleaned up, it's been fifteen years, you said? So, yeah.
Were they all built at the same time, Austin? I thought, I seem to recall like they added one, then the next one, then the next one.
My understanding was it was a one-time Eagle Scout project, and I met the Eagle Scout.
It was our troop, actually. I remember the.
I can't, I, for the life of me, can't remember the gentleman's name. I played golf with him last year, but I can't remember. Yeah, it was an Eagle Scout project. They've.
Drew Watson? Was it Drew Watson?
I'll think of it. But they get, they get used very frequently. And it was a great project and the materials were great, but just being down in the, the salt air and in the. The weather, you know, for fifteen, eighteen years really takes a toll on. That kind of material. So we'll, we'll change up the material, still use the existing space, not expanding at all. And it'll just be safer and better for everybody.
So, and I don't know if we'll go through each of the projects and then take a vote unless somebody feels they need to be voted on separately. No? Okay, so let's real quickly then. Item B is the wayfinding signs, Erin. You know, if you just want to briefly explain, this is kind of a follow-on to the, we're trying to be consistent and upgrade everything and update it. And just real quick, explain how many of these again, and, and, you know, we haven't determined what's going to be on them yet, right? We have to kind of work that through. But we have a model from what's there now, right? To start with. Okay, there you go. No, you're fine. Go ahead. Speak up.
Is that the right microphone?
I was, the different teams' meetings are so different sometimes, sorry. So, yes, we did ten, originally in twenty seventeen, the town went through our entire wayfinding sign package. Both welcome signs, vehicular wayfinding and pedestrian wayfinding. And so when, when the ARPA money came. Into play, we broke them out into various sections. The first was our gateway signs, our welcome signs. We rolled out ten of those. With ARPA funds that totaled just about fifty-one thousand dollars for the ten signs. We have roughly sixteen thousand dollars remaining in that account. And so the next phase were the vehicular welcome signs. We have four that we've identified to be replaced. Starting on the south end of town, we have one on the Hammond asset connector as you're leading down towards Hammond asset State Park. I can quick screen share if anybody can't recall how beautifully they're looking currently on the sides of our road. But they're pretty bad. We have one on the south end of seventy-nine. So you can see this is the existing condition, and all of these signs are currently existing in their locations. So you have the south end of seventy-nine near the Post Road. That sign will have to be slightly relocated anyways. From our sidewalk project, the woodland road project that's connecting down to the Post Road. And then a little further north on seventy-nine, as you're, if you're heading southbound at the intersection of Horse Pond where the pines. Are, we have another directional sign that tells folks what's south on seventy-nine and then also. Through Horse Pond and Duck Hole, you know, the town campus, the Hammond asset. Section of town. And then lastly, we have another big important sign is our circle. Sign at seventy-nine and eighty. So these were the four that we identified that should be replaced next. In looking at some models from other communities, just driving around and speaking with John Miller, we have some ideas. That will get drafted on paper to bring to you and EDC and whoever else would like to look at those, just to give some feedback. On the actual design, but the goal is to carry through that nice, the town colors and the seal and clean them up. So we earmarked roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars for those four signs. And the remaining money that is in ARPA. That came with the welcome signs, we had talked about replacing because there is some rot on the town campus signs, that two-sided. Angle entrance sign, as well as the smaller directional sign as you're coming down the driveway into town campus. So we were hoping to allocate that remaining money towards upgrading those. It's a total of four signs, actually, in that area. And that was from the existing budget for the welcome. The town campus one because it is rotting and it's, you can see there's like white spots damage that's been done to it. And then this, this twenty-eight thousand dollars is for the wayfinding signs, right? We may be a little high, we may be able to return, but once we get an actual design and, and look through options for materials. We'll come back with, you know, and let you know a specific number, but roughly six to seven thousand dollars was what we earmarked for each sign. Okay, any questions on that for Erin? I know that. One thing that we will come back and talk more extensively about is what goes on these signs. We did, when we did the welcome signs that went through the EDC and then it went through the Board of Selectmen. I know we'd heard from a member of the public with some concerns about the. Kind of the history that's on the signs right now that talk about, you know, when the town was settled, which clearly is not, it was European settlement, right? Not indigenous settlement. And so I think we need to have a conversation. What we want to put on these things going forward. The nice thing about our existing welcome signs is that bottom thing. Is fairly easy to change in and out. We designed it that way because we thought about doing a slogan campaign. You know, and, and seeing, having a townwide slogan campaign and picking a town slogan. We thought about, do we do rotate it every like two years and put something different there? So that's an interchangeable bar on the bottom of our welcome signs that. We were intending to come back and talk about that. You know, we just wanted to get the signs up and we just took the generic. Bervage that was on the previous signs. And this one with the wayfinding will also bring that. We'll go through EDC first and then come back with our proposal for this. Right, and the goal is to have a changeable face as well on the wayfinding so that we have flexibility. So if no further questions on that, maybe we'll just run through C real quick. So we, this would basically be. Installing and correct me, Art, that bar, right? The camera bar and a lap, the capability similar to what we have in the Fishbowl Room. Police Community Room and then also at the Senior Center. If you could just spend a second on that.
Sure, you know, we want to mimic the capabilities that we do have at the Fishbowl and the Hammond Asset Room. And a couple of more large spaces. We had done some equipment swapping around early on, so. The Police Department does not quite as, is not quite as well equipped for large hybrid meetings. In that room, and it is a nice room, excuse me, for that. So we'd be looking to, you know, we need a little, a little. Networking equipment that still has to be in place. Senior Center's already set up for that now. Police Department, it's not a huge. Amount of work to be done in there, but a couple of data drops need to be run and a network switch. Is bumping the costs up a little bit, but we use a Poly X seventy video conferencing bar. On each of the large, on the larger screens that we have in our current meeting rooms that are working this way. They have a small controller panel on each one, so it's intended to make running a meeting easier from. Point of view of the Board that's, or Commission that would be in there. And a couple of small computers that would add to some flexibility as to how many displays we might be able to have. Join as attendees watching the meeting, that sort of thing, in multiple location, in the room, within the room. So, you know, also looking to do a small. Powered podium as well for the. Senior Center dining area. So that would, excuse me, that would help with some of the sound, you know, there's, we don't want to install too much in the way of, without really testing how the acoustics are going to respond. In there, that's a lot of, a lot of reflected sound, I think, but.
One thing I want to mention, so all of this equipment is technically transferable to another room, isn't it? Because we're not doing extensive wiring. What's nice about this is it's the equipment. And we could move it to a room with the Academy in the future, or, you know. Is that correct, Art?
Well, well, there, you know, those are not routine moves, but they could be moved. Certainly, they can be rolled. Within the building to another space easily. But we certainly can have it moved, you know.
Like permanently, though, if we decided we were going to use an academy room as a public meeting space, we could take this, the equipment installed in the. Right, because it's portable and, and, and move it. But I think it's worked well. The panels have worked well. You get a lot of different volunteers with all our different committees. It makes it a more user-friendly and. And we had talked about all this two years ago when we did an initial round of some of the ARPA funding, but then we just didn't know what the demand was going to be, but it's. It's in high demand and everybody wants hybrid. Only have one room. Our board only actually has control over one room. Two rooms, I guess. They have a smaller system, just that owl, right? And one of the other.
There's a, there's a mounted system in Town Room B here at Town Campus. And we do have the owl, which is truly portable.
But it's a small, it's a smaller, you know, so if you're going to have a meeting where you're expecting thirty people, it's really, there's very limited options. So, any other, any more questions?
Yeah, so I, and I don't want to sidetrack the conversation, but one of my great disappointments is that we've not been able to hold meetings at the library and the new. Big meeting space there, which we did a lot of talking about before the library was open. Now the technology has changed, or the needs for technology has changed, and the library doesn't have that. Was that room considered as part of? That we might do?
We did give them funding, and I'm actually due to, I was told they can do some hybrid meetings. I actually was supposed to. Visit and see the setup a couple of weeks ago. So there is some possibility there, but. You know, could we do, use that meeting room sometime? Sure, but we have a lot of boards and commissions. And so I'm not disagreeing, and I've talked about, I thought, I told the library, I'd love to have a Board of Selectmen meeting there, and so I just need to. Learn more about what their setup is and the quality of it. We gave them like, but it wasn't much. I think we gave them five or six thousand dollars or something like that. One of the first rounds of ARPA for meeting. And, and so, yes, we can use it, and I've talked to them about using the room. I just don't know the quality of the setup. I still think there's need, though, in general, for just more, because every, this is what everybody's demanding now. So affordable housing committees, hybrid academies committee, it is hybrid, pretty much all our boards and commissions now are primarily meeting in hybrid. I don't think any of them are meeting just in person only. It's separately small committees. Unless, and Police Commission, they're using literally when they meet, a laptop, a camera on their laptop. To do their Zoom meetings, so. So I think this would be a good, good, good setup for them. Is that, any other questions or everybody comfortable with all three of these?
Silly question, we're talking about committee meetings. Austin, the senior center would be available to a commission that wanted to meet there at seven PM? On a given night?
Yes, sir. We have multiple meetings that take place throughout the evenings during the week at the Senior Center.
I might chime in, though, that. To be successful in running a hybrid meeting, you have to have someone who's relatively well-trained in the use of the equipment in the room. It's not that much to learn, but, you know, I think Erin can tell you that. She's, she's a very good user of the equipment and understands it well, but that's not true for every volunteer. You know, not that Erin's a volunteer, she's not, but I'm, you know, I'm just saying that. The amount of technical support available at the Senior Center at seven PM, I can't speak to. But I would think that that would be a bit of a concern.
Well, and I think that the Senior Center, to me, is the only other larger option that we have for. We think we're going to get a lot of public. Our, our room is limited on capacity of fifty, I think, or something, right? The Board of Selectmen Room, and then the Hammond Asset Room, which we don't have. Dibs up, first dibs on, right? Because that's Board of Education uses that a lot for all their meetings. So we try to get the Hammond Asset Room, we think we're going to be over fifty people. There's, and then there, there's no other, then the option after that is, where do we go? And so the Senior Center, I know we've conducted a number of things there that have been really successful. We've had Madison Cable Access act as that camera, but that gets into scheduling issues too, and you've got to have a whole nother setup now with a person. Meaning a camera. So that's where the thought was, this is, won't be an optimal system for that room because of all the glass and the height of the ceilings, correct? But it will offer that as a, you know, reasonably priced. Setup that we could, our, our board or Board of Finance could hold a public meeting, a hybrid public meeting.
And then at some point, we're going to get Paulson back. And we'll also have the Little Theater at Academy, which is a natural. The natural place to have larger meetings, I think.
And that's where I think like some of this, if it works out for those rooms, could be transferable. You know, it's, it's, it's physical equipment. And screens. So if we decide that we don't want to purchase new for that building, we can just transfer. Any other questions? No? Because I know we got a few other things to get done here, and I know. So if everybody's good, all in favor, say aye to approving item number eleven. Okay, great. All right, thank you. And this obviously goes on to the Board of Finance. It's all ARPA requests do. I will get an answer on the library, though. I intended to visit it two weeks ago, and I've got to, I will have that for the Board of Finance discussion. Item number twelve is discussion, and thank you, guys. Thank you, Erin, patiently waiting through all the conversations. Austin. Item number twelve is discussion of proposed policy regarding public participation during town board and commission meetings. So this is basically just following on our conversation at our last meeting last week. You know, given some of the public meetings we've had, there's been some frustration, I think, on the public side, not understanding kind of the. Rules of engagement, so to speak, that we have at our meetings, and frustrated by a lack of back and forth or direct contact and question and answers. Uh rules of engagement, so to speak, that we have in our meetings and frustrated by a lack of back and forth or direct contact and question and answers. And so I thought it's good practice and other times have started to do this or have done this in the past to lay out. Kind of how we, how meetings are run, um what the and and kind of. The expectations coming to a public meeting, and so we set those expectations for people that are attending. Um and put kind of a best practices policy out there that all our boards and commissions can adopt. Some of our regulatory boards like planning and zoning and they're gonna have to follow what's appropriate for their public hearing processes, those are regulated things. But this is just more for unregulated type meetings that we have. So I sent around to you and, you know, I know we're Scott, I know particularly um is bumping up against a time zone. And this was just put together very quickly, this was pulled from a couple of different policies that Jeannie had researched. Pulled it together and I kind of like tried to meld it all together, um it it needs work. Um so I thought we could just spend a few minutes maybe talking about it today at a high level and then um. Maybe get into the nuts and bolts of refining it, you know, because just because of time constraints um over the next, you know. Meeting or two. Um so just high level i- input i- if, you know, the if you had a chance to read it, thoughts would be great.
Oh, I think it's a great start, I think it's a great first draft, um. And, you know, I tried to look around, see what other towns are doing and for some reason I'm infatuated with Fairfield right now, there. There the resources they have online are are really phenomenal. Um and they've got a whole section on on this type of thing, exactly the policies that we're we're grappling with. I a very high level pick, I think you've captured them here, I I do think there are some. Getting in the weeds types of things that that we could go over, that we don't have to go over right now, but. Um you know, creating a pathway for asking questions, um you know, maybe requesting that those be submitted in writing. Um simply to make sure that the question being asked is is being responded to accurately versus us transcribing it. Um and then answering it, so um for the sake of accuracy, um. I maybe think we should tighten up the whether or not we're gonna respond. Um and and you've built in the flexibility that, you know, maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't. I looked um and and I and it struck me that maybe having a second selectmen comments period after the public comments. Would allow us to discuss things that came up with each other in um in public comment. And so it would not be um a uh necessarily a Q and A session, but it would give us the flexibility to talk. Amongst ourselves about what we'd heard. Um and if there was a little factual tidbit that needed to be dropped, that that's where it could be dropped. So, you know, again, staying really high level.
So maybe um and and everybody can give the thoughts, but I'm just thinking in terms if you want to email me directly with specifics. Uh and then I could come up with a, you know, aggregate it all with a kind of combined draft that flows well. Um we could, Jeannie can work with me on that, that might be helpful. Um a- any other high level uh feedback?
I guess I I had a couple of things that um. You know, I was, I was thinking about and I can, I can email them, I I don't think they're, that that, as Bruce was sort of suggesting in in the weeds a little bit here, but I really like that idea, Bruce, of the. At the, at the end of the meeting, kind of coming back and, you know, maybe an opportunity to react at least to some of the questions, I think we're always sort of in that. Do we answer, do we not answer, sometimes it's gray, sometimes it's not. So I think, I think we've got to make sure that we just eliminate the gray as as much as we possibly can, so that the the public feels like we're being responsive. Um I I've seen a lot of social media chatter on this over last week. Uh with people sort of asking and questioning sort of the this particular topic, and I think, you know. By no means are we trying to suppress, you know, the voters here and 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 our residents in terms of providing feedback, so I think. I think w- we can all nod our heads there that that is absolutely not the case, we're just trying to get, I think, a little more clear and consistent process in place. Or a standard in place that all meeting, all boards and commissions can follow, um because I think sometimes we get in those. Quandaries, right, of do we answer, do we not answer, is it a comment, is it not a comment? So I I I think we're just trying to make sure that everybody's playing by the same playbook, um which is important. Um there there was something that did come up, y- you know, and I know it's been requested a couple of times and we can come back to it, but I think. There is an appropriate time for Q and A, which is more of a public information session, and so I think, you know, leveraging those. Those information sessions like we just talked about with the sidewalks, maybe we're gonna do one for Academy, I don't know, but, you know, I think. Leveraging that mechanism and that medium for the 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 Q and A piece as opposed to maybe the comments that might be provided. Inside of a board of selectmen meeting or others, um you know, might be useful just to sort of define those those mediums as well.
I'd like to take Scott's comments one, one step further, I think we need to distinguish between business meetings. Press conferences, public hearings and public information sessions. Because I think each of those of of uh sort of have, should have different ground rules, so. Uh I'm with you on that, Scott, I I think we need to uh have our document. Spell out the differences and how the public participates in each of those four different kinds of forums.
Yep, yeah, I think these are all great ideas and, you know, I I guess my biggest thing is I just want to reassure the community that. Um this is not a mechanism to limit. Their ability to participate in a meeting, I think, you know, we also need to. Consider that we have a lot of boards and commissions, oftentimes we find them with new members. And sometimes they're not even sure about what their responsibility is in terms of. Taking comments, responding to comments, that sort of thing, so this is a good set of guidelines for all of our volunteers as well, but. You know, I personally just think the public comment sessions are super important because it guides us as Board of Selectmen. In terms of what items should we be adding to future agendas? What type of public information session should we be scheduling, because if we're hearing a lot of feedback. On a particular topic, then, you know, that's obviously highlighting to us that deeper conversations with the community need to be had. So.
The only, the only, the only challenge with that, Jen, is I and I'm just talking out loud here, but. I think, I think we've got to decide in this particular policy about, and and Bruce, I think you and I've talked about this in the past too, it's the, it's the focus piece, it's the. You know, do do you only allow questions on with what's on the agenda? Or do you allow sort of a an an open set of topics, I think that's something that we got to sort of work through. And maybe there's a a legal aspect of that too, relative to how we post agendas and we might need town council to help us. So, yeah, um Scott, I think you've hit on it, we we exist within the regulation of the Freedom of Information Act. In Connecticut and um and those are guardrails that we have to be sensitive to. Um so, uh I I think, I think we can work with, I think we can manage that, but but it is, it is a real regulation that we have to do. Um and and just to build on everybody's comments, um you know, we talk about the benefits to the boards and commissions, but. Um you know, one of the things that I've been struck by is is how people um are consistently, and I say consistently for the. Eight or nine years or so that I've been on the board. Um people stand up during public comment and have an expectation that isn't what public comment is, and so they leave unhappy. And I think this is an opportunity for us to set expectations about. What the interaction is going to be so that they understand this is what I'm gonna get out of this and and not and not be unhappy, I mean, we've. We've um, you know, we we get people who aren't engaged in an in in town government or a topic and then become engaged. Um as as will happen and, you know, we do this all the time, we understand what it is, but the newcomers don't. Um new to the process don't, and I think this is an opportunity for us to clear that up. I think that's a really important word too, Bruce, is the expectation setting, I think that's that's powerful. And and for us included, right, so that we know what the rules of the road are.
I mean, I I think one of the things that the town is actively looking at um is how to address. Project related questions and information and make sure the information that goes out is accurate. And we looked in last year when we were teeing up the strategic plan, there's all these, what it's a new form, it's social engagement type. Uh platform, so that the town controls though, rather than having social media and. Rad- random posts to community pages about things. Having a way to drive all those questions and the information in one spot. On the link through the town website on a project, right now we just post things, but there's actually a a this new platform, these new platforms and some towns have been using it. Um so you can concentrate a project and you can have Q and A and the town responding to questions. You know, on a controlled environment linked to factual documents, so I think that. Is something that I want to explore, we kind of put it aside, you know, um last year for the strategic plan, we weren't quite sure. How to use that, but I think we all agreed we needed to do something like this, because there's so many projects going on now. Whether it's Academy or Garvin Point or the sidewalk projects, you know, and these questions are coming. From all different cha- I mean, I get messengered on Facebook with stuff, I there's.
Yeah, me too.
Post things on the community pages, people text me or text other board members, there's email coming in, then there's also submit a comment. And no one ever uses that, to be honest, a a concern on the town website, there's actually a button, you can submit a concern to the town. And I think I've gotten probably twenty of those in my five years in office, so. There's all these different channels and so to try to drive it through one channel so that we can have. And it's hard for the staff to to react to this. And now we're getting FOIA requests for everything because people are angry that their questions aren't being answered, right? And you have volunteers that are running a lot of these committees who don't have access to everything. So it's a lot, and I think that people, you know, the public needs to understand that we're doing our best. But we have limited resources and there is just a lot coming at us in multiple directions about these things and so. Trying to find a better way to, you know, aggregate it. And then address it all at once would be better for the staff and I think better for the community, so. That'll be something that we'll be coming forward and looking at as a board, if this is something we, it would be an investment the town would be making. Um and um and it might help some of this and be like just driving people to these platforms. Where we can at least make sure that we're giving accurate information out, and I know. Uh you board members and I know Scott's very good at this, you know, you try to get answers for people and it's great. But there's steps for you to, it's not because you know the answer, you're just going in and getting it from the town, right? So let's create a more efficient. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we all get it, we all get these questions and 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 then, you know, and we all don't have the answers all the time. So we have to go then figure it out. And and I and it's, I know sometimes I'm like, don't text me, just send me an email, because at least I can forward the email, right? I can forward it to the staff and say, you know, can you please look into this and like, uh you know, get me the background on this or whatever, it's very hard to do that with a text. Um and so you can attach a document to a text, you know, so um but anyways, it's a bit of a sidetrack, but I think.
She's talking to me, by the way.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not complaining, you're, I think people love how responsive you are, that's a positive thing. Um so I think we we need to, you know, just, you know, figure out a way that that so that they don't feel they have to go to you, you know what I mean? They they're getting the answers in a a good channel from directly from the town with factual information, right? Um so that's a little bit of a of a distraction from the policy, but I think we're seeing the frustration from the public. At the meetings, right, and so I think finding better ways to get answers to their questions is what I'm trying to get at, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'll be coming back probably over the summer to talk more about that as we ramp up the communications piece, we've talked about, that is something that we heard a lot. That people want better, more cohesive, simple communications, um we'll talk about that and hopefully that'll address some of the question issues. It'll be a way to drive questions to us.
Oh, I know Bruce and I have talked about this, but I think, you know, uh an important piece of this is, and maybe we road test it with our board of selectmen agendas, but. Putting those four or five bullets, whatever they ultimately come out of this policy. Onto the agenda in some way, shape or form, so that when the public sees the agenda, they also see, here's the rules of the road, right? And I just, it it puts everybody again on the same playbook, um so I I think getting to those four or five bullets, whatever that looks like. Sooner than later, so that we can road test it would be smart.
Yeah, okay, well, I think uh to be continued, I think um send uh to myself and Jeannie your. Specific comments and markups and then we can have a a more robust detailed conversation and the public can see. You know, this isn't anything crazy, we're just following what a lot of communities are doing and trying to make sure that uh. Everybody gets is satisfied when they come to the meetings and getting their answer, questions answered in an efficient way, so. Um, okay, great, so with that, then, um we'll move on to citizens' comments and then we'll be going to into executive session. Okay, great, uh please state your name and address for the record.
You're on mute right now.
Yeah, PJ, you are on mute. Hello, is PJ uh available still? Okay, we'll just move on if there's other hands raised. I think that's been raised for a while, so I'm not sure if that person is uh.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, great. Alrighty, so.
There's something that just ha- popped up. Uh will our, from Ally Rourke, will our welcome signs ever get the solar upgrade like the Guilford Town? Did, I guess.
Oh, uh so on the solar, actually, I forgot to mention, thank you, Ally. Um in the conversation, we wanted to do the solar, we were gonna model Guilfords, we've heard there's been issues with their. Lights, um and so Erin is actually working with the sign vendor to see if there's something better. That we can get, we decided not to go with that product, um and so I don't have a budget for that yet, and that might be a small add-on that we would be looking to add on. Um but we would like to do the solar lights, um but we just don't know if we've got, uh we were there, my understanding is there's some issues with that product and uh. And that we shouldn't purchase it for the our signs, so, so but we're we're on it, it's, we're looking into it. Um.
Here we are.
Other uh, any other um public comment? Okay, we've got PJ who has returned, PJ unmute yourself, state your name and address, please, you are, you can ask your uh make your comment. Okay, going once. Going twice, all right. Third time, nope, okay, uh we'll just move on here, Jeannie. Um, all right, with that, then, there's no other hands raised, um. We will um now, um I'd like to make, okay, just so the public knows, we're going to an executive session, so. Um we will be removing people from the meeting and going to a private discussion. Um I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. Um uh regarding a personnel matter and I would like to invite into that meeting uh Sam DeBura. And Stacy Nobitz and um and uh I'm trying to think who else, I don't think. Uh unfortunately, our HR director is not here. Is there anybody else, Jeannie?
Kelsey is online, though, Kelsey.
Oh, Kelsey's here, okay, and Kelsey. Headed from our HR department, um like to invite her in as well. So. Okay.
Some move, some move, second, whatever we need.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then um Jean's gonna stop uh recording and she'll uh.
Have to, I have to uninvite people first.
Okay, so we'll just wait a few seconds.
Stacy.
Oh, you got a fireball.
Damn you.
Are those your own or are those mine?
I don't know, because I went on Amazon and bought a container. And now all of my pockets, like they used to have face masks, now my, all my pockets have fireballs.
Okay, so we have unlocked the webinar, um we're back into public session. Um and will you move on to item number fifteen in the agenda? Discuss and take action to approve a separation agreement for the superintendent of highway, may I get a motion?
It moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, item number fifteen passes, and I guess with that, then, hearing no objection, I will adjourn the meeting, so. Thank you very much, I know this ran a little bit longer, but thank you, guys, have a good day.
You do.